Good evening, it is now six thirty and I will call the Monday, April ninth, two thousand and eighteen Planning Commission meeting to order. Thank you, everyone, for joining us this evening. Our first item on the agenda this evening is approval of the agenda. Are there any changes from staff or commission on the agenda for this evening? No changes, I would stand for a motion.
Second.
Motion and second, all those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Our second item on the agenda this evening is approval of the minutes from the March two thou- March twenty-sixth, two thousand and eighteen Planning Commission meeting. Commissioners, are there any changes on those minutes?
Nope.
No changes, any changes from staff?
No changes.
No changes, I would stand for a motion.
So move.
Motion, second, all those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, and the motion carries. Our third item on the agenda this evening is a discussion item related to potential amendments to Title X zoning of the city code to incorporate changes to allow accessory dwelling units within R one and R one A districts and to modify the minimum apartment square footage size or micro units.
Good evening Chair, members of the commission. So, before you, I do have a discussion item. So, as I go through the PowerPoint, if there's any questions, anything that you want to raise, certainly that's your opportunity and then towards the end, we can have a discussion as well. So, to give you background, back in early two thousand and seventeen at the city council's all-day work session that they have annually, there was direction to staff to examine accessory dwelling units and temporary healthcare dwelling units. These are deta- the temporary healthcare dwelling units are detached, what were called drop homes, that cities could allow if they wanted to through an ordinance. Burnsville elected to not allow them. However, council wanted us to revisit that. So, we went through a governance process. As part of that process, staff completed a white paper, research paper examining those two topics. Through that process, there is a expert testimony or public comment period and then finally, a council dialogue that occurs. Between the start of the governance process to the end, the council wanted us also to examine micro apartment units. So, that was also something that through the process was researched and provided to the council. At the end, council ultimately directed staff to develop an ordinance addressing accessory dwelling units and micro apartments, not focusing on the temporary healthcare dwelling units. So, what I'll talk to you tonight about is only the accessory dwelling units and the micro apartments. So, we'll start out with accessory dwelling units. What is an accessory dwelling unit? Just for the general viewing audience and yourself. It can occur in many forms. So typically, you have a primary residence in a single-family house and then you have a subordinate type of unit. Either, it can come in many forms, either attached to the house with a separate entrance perhaps. It could be integrated into the house, for example, within someone's basement and have access to the main floor and then a small kitchenette and maybe laundry facility and bedroom. It can be detached from the home. Again, smaller perhaps than the primary home but having all those amenities like a kitchen, sleeping quarters, living space. Sometimes it's integrated above the garage. But again, the key is that it's accessory and that it's subordinate to the primary unit. It still functions as a single-family house. Perhaps it's for a mother-in-law or a granny flat, as they're often referred to. Within the white paper and through the council process, we examined the different advantages and disadvantages of accessory dwelling units. There's a lot of information on the next two slides. Basically, it provides the opportunity for multi-generational housing. Your mom or grandma could live there. You can have perhaps your college student that just maybe graduated from college and is coming back home to live, maybe starting a family. You could potentially have your nanny live in that extra space. So it provides family or perhaps those related to be living under one roof. There's also potential for increase in value in the home by adding an accessory dwelling unit, so that can add to the tax base. It can provide us a source of income if it's rented out to the property owner. So, there's some different benefits certainly of accessory dwelling units. There's certainly some disadvantages too to think about. And again, this is some thoughts that should occur as you're providing direction towards the ordinance and when we look at performance standards, keep some of these in mind. So, some disadvantages. It can be a perceived increase in density in a neighborhood. Potential for additional cars, parking on private property or on the street. Neighbors may feel encroached upon, especially if it's a detached unit and maybe the structure is close to a property line. There's potential for additional garbage and recycling that may occur from additional people living in the home. Potential increase in demand in some sewer and water services perhaps. And I did note, there could be homeowners association conflicts, but that's something that would have to be sorted out privately, but just something to highlight. Through the white paper process, we did research to determine who is doing this. Not only within the Minneapolis-St. Paul region, but nationally, what are the trends? And just to focus in on our market cities, there are some that allow accessory dwelling units. Apple Valley, Brooklyn Park, Eagan, Lakeville, Minnetonka, and Plymouth. And then there's other cities that don't currently allow accessory dwelling units. Coon Rapids, Edina, Maple Grove, and St. Louis Park. And this is current as of two thousand and seventeen, so it's possible things have changed between now and then. When you're looking at accessory dwelling units, we wanted to check with our building and fire departments to see, could there be conflicts? What are some things that we should be aware of in developing an ordinance? Basically, they're allowed per building code. The unit can also be rented. And the main thing is, if there's physical separation between the units, if they have separate entrances or they're a detached unit, that there has to be either fire separation or enough separation between the two buildings to meet fire codes. There's some best management practices when developing an ordinance for an accessory dwelling unit. Typically, there's some sort of review that's required. Some cities, like in California, for example, they're allowed by right. You can just basically apply for a building permit for your accessory dwelling unit. Some cities require a conditional use permit or other type of process. So, your ordinance should allow, who, what's the review process? There should be an establishment of where it's allowed, which zoning districts this is allowed in. Is it allowed in all zoning districts? Is it just allowed in our single-family and R one A zoning district? What's the purpose? Definitions associated with the accessory dwelling unit ordinance, performance standards, and then other considerations too to keep in mind. Is this allowed within a environmental overlay district near a shoreline? What are those consequences that we might want to think about? And restrictive covenants as well for homeowners association. Again, that's private, but just something to keep in mind. As far as Burnsville ordinances, just to remind yourself and again, as you're thinking about your discussion, in Burnsville, we have our single-family zoning districts, which are R one, with a ten thousand square foot minimum lot size. We do require a minimum home size of one thousand one hundred square feet. We do require a two-car enclosed garage of four hundred and forty square feet for your primary residence. And then setbacks. The homes do need to be set back a certain distance from property lines, the principal structure, thirty feet from a front property line if it's a corner lot, twenty feet from the street side, ten feet from an interior lot line, and then thirty feet away from the rear. And then accessory structures, so this is a detached situation. Thirty feet from the front, twenty feet from a street side, five feet from a side yard, and eight feet from a rear yard. And then R one A, we have one and two acre minimum lot sizes and that depends on if a home's connected to sewer and water. One acre, if you're hooked up to sewer and water. If you're not hooked up to sewer and water, it's the two acre minimum. We do have the same dwelling size of eleven hundred square feet. Same two-car garage, minimum size. Setbacks are a little greater, fifty-foot front, forty-foot side, street side, ten-foot side yard, thirty-foot rear yard. Accessory structures, a fifty-foot front, forty-foot street side, five-foot side yard, and eight-foot rear. We're going to talk about setbacks later on, so we might have to flashback, but keep those in mind. We also have some key definitions to, just to point out. Definition of family, so when you're thinking about performance standards and who should potentially live in these homes, do keep in mind, you are allowed to have multiple people in a home living under one roof related by blood or marriage, two or more persons. And then if it's a, if the four of you decide to rent a house together, you could, but I couldn't live there as well. So, once you hit five unrelated people, then it's no longer considered a single-family home. And then there are group homes, which are basically for six people or fewer. There are some state requirements that cover that. And then a dwelling unit. Keep in mind, a residential, so residential unit, you know, provide, providing complete independent living facilities for one family, including permanent provisions for living, sleeping, eating, and cooking. So, I just want you to keep those standard, our city code definitions in mind. To give you a visual perspective of, I had mentioned lot sizes and lot sizes that we have in Burnsville. The graphic on the left represents our R one and R one A lot sizes that are ten thousand square feet or greater in the kind of greenish-yellow color. The lots that are one acre or larger in size are in that middle graphic and then two acres or larger is in the graphic on the right. Not a whole lot of difference between the two on the right, but visual perspective, we'll be talking about, we'll be talking about lot sizes in just a little bit as I guide you through a discussion. So, city council did give direction on what they visioned an ordinance should include. One, they definitely did want to pursue accessory dwelling units and asked for staff to prepare a draft ordinance, which is in your packet, for discussion and would like the Planning Commission to act upon a future ordinance. One of the comments from city council was to allow accessory dwelling units that are attached to a home if the home, or if the lot size is ten thousand square feet or larger. There is also council discussion about allowing detached accessory dwelling units on R one or R one A only if greater than one acre in size. There was some discussion about possibly a two-acre threshold, but the majority was comfortable with a one-acre threshold. And then other feedback was, look to the city of Eagan as an ordinance example. So, in your packet, the ordinance is largely based off of Eagan's model. However, Eagan does not allow a detached component, so staff has modified the ordinance to allow that. There's three main discussion points that I'd like the Planning Commission to discuss and I have a slide for each one. One, the purpose statement, the definitions, and the performance standards. So, the purpose statement. It's also located in your packet if you wanted to refer to that, but I have it fully on the slide. Speaks to allowing alternative housing, that this is desirable. In Burnsville, also allowing multi-generational housing, but also speaking to the concerns about the impact onto neighboring properties. So if you wanted to take a minute to read through that and let me know if you have any comment.
Commissioners, are there any comments or questions on the purpose statement part of this? I assume everybody's probably read this, Adam.
We like it.
Okay.
We like it.
So, the definition currently in the draft ordinance, I have one definition to accessory dwelling units. The, this would be located within Title X, so the general definitions would also apply. But we have a specific definition included about accessory dwelling units, that it's basically subordinate to the principal single-family dwelling. If you think additional definitions should be added or if this should be amended, certainly open to that.
Is there any comment on that piece? Commissioner Benkey?
Regina, I think the, just trying to make a distinction here that classically, the four requirements need to be met before the dwelling unit is distinguished from the primary residence. In other words, if somebody was to add an, add a, have a bedroom in the basement, have a bathroom for that bedroom in the basement and there was a wet bar that provided water and refrigeration, but no cooking, that would not be an ADU. And basically, you'd need all four of those components for that ADU to qualify as such.
I would say so, correct.
I've run into that quite a bit in many, many cities, that the addition of the cooking component basically makes this a two-family dwelling essentially, which, that's sort of where we're going though with this too, is that we're allowing the creation of a, of a second family dwelling in this situation.
So, not only a cooking facility, but also this would enable somebody to put a physical wall between their main principal residence and almost a attached home. Whereas today, someone could have, have access between all of their rooms and that, that would be something that we would allow by right.
Okay, so, so without a physical separation, it is not an accessory dwelling unit?
Right.
Okay, but you still are allowing, we're still allowing the second kitchen now?
We do, because we don't necessarily know or distinguish if that's for the purpose of grandma living there or if it's for the purpose of, I just like to entertain and I don't want to have to go up and downstairs and it's accessible to, you know, my-
Exactly.
My TV room or whatever.
That was sort of the point. I've run into municipalities where that is exactly the distinction that they don't want to make. Basically, if there's a, if there's a kitchen, it's a second unit, so, okay.
Commissioner Reddick?
To further with that, I was under the impression, and maybe I was wrong, when we started this discussion, we did not allow that. Is that correct? Or maybe I, one of the public hearings we had, or there's been quite a few. I thought that maybe it was a city council discussion that Commissioner Benkey's point was specifically talked about, a second kitchen.
Correct, so through the council governance process, that really was an opportunity for us to look at our own internal practices and how different departments review things and an opportunity for us to, I guess, all get on the same page as far as how we're interpreting the code. So, I think you're correct. I believe in my white paper, I had mentioned that any additional cooking facility would be a trigger for a second unit, but after going through the governance process and having some staff discussion and interpretation checks, I guess, we, we came to the determination that, that would, if it, as long as there's open, openings between the two spaces and that there's not a physical wall separating or, you know, locked area separating the two, that, that's kind of the deciding factor, so.
So, I'm pretty sure, I think Councilmember Gufferson or something had talked about it and I, I thought it was odd at the time that that was a requirement that we had, so, okay. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Singh.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, I agree with the cooking part of it. If you don't have cooking facilities, and it should not be a dwelling, an additional dwelling. A dwelling is a dwelling where people live, cook, eat, you know, have sanitation. You have to have all of those. I'm still not clear about this. There's, there has to be a common wall, right, separating the two.
There doesn't necessarily have to be. So, in, I'm going to jump to a slide. So, this photo here is an example of a Lakeville home, a multi-generational living home. They would consider the front part of the house on the left-hand side, that's the accessory dwelling unit. The part where the garage is facing us in the picture, that's the primary home. So, there's living space. However, between the two units, it's completely open. So, it, it can occur that way or it could occur completely walled off. From our proposed ordinance standpoint, the proposal, it, it doesn't matter. It can be completely open or it can be completely walled off.
Mr. Chair, with all due respect, I don't agree with that. For it to be an additional dwelling, what we're talking here about is an additional dwelling. If there's no separate wall separating the main home from this unit, then that unit is a part of the home. And then it's not, I, I don't see it as a separate dwelling unit. It could be that you add a room to the, to that main home, the house. But for it to be a dwelling unit, separate dwelling unit, I think it's important that we do have that separation, that wall, that makes it a separation from the main house. That's, that's my feeling about it. I think we should have a wall. The wall can have a door where you, you can get entry from either way, but, and you can lock, you can lock that door. But there needs to be a wall. If it's, there's no wall, then it's just an extension of the main, main house. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Singh, Commissioner Singh. Regina, was there any discussion on that? Because I guess I'm not, I wouldn't, first, just speaking for myself, I, I don't know that I, I guess it would. I'm going to table what I'm thinking about and just jump to my quick question about the definition that would maybe help Commissioner Singh, and I am jumping forward a little bit. But as far as the definition goes, would its own entry point or main door add to that definition? We're going to see that here in a little bit, but.
The way it's written now, you can have a separate entry point or you could have an entry point internal through the house. And that's very similar to Eagan's model.
Commissioner Benkey?
I've seen this plan before. I mean, I know this one, it's on our, it's on our plan. The garage door and then just beyond it, the, the single-car garage door and then just beyond it is a separate entrance. Okay, this home is designed as a multi-generational home, it's not designed as an ADU.
That's right.
Okay. And I, I, I believe I'm going to follow with Commissioner Singh here in terms of the distinction between the two of them. If I was designing a home that I had intended as a multi-generational, I would hate to have to come in and have it treated as an ADU. By the other token, if I am creating a home with a space that would want to be separate so that I could have a nanny, a hired help in there or a non-relative in there and have the separation from my house, that to me is the same distinction that Commissioner Singh was looking for. Whether there's a further connection that connects them or not, there- Whether there's a further connection that connects them or not, there is still the ability to separate them. And I do think that that falls under what I would consider to be the definition of accessory dwelling unit. It's accessory to the primary, to the primary structure, which is the house. And I'm leaning the same way, that to me, having a second entrance, well, a detached unit would have a separate entrance. An attached entrance could have a se- separate entrance, or not. And I think that once you start to play it, put that onto it, then, you know, how far do we go in trying to define that? But if it's simply that it's completely separate, then it has to have its own entrance. By definition. I mean, not even writing it down, it has to have a separate entrance if there's a wall separating the two units, the primary and accessory.
Well, when I look at this example, it is different than those three mockups that we saw at the very beginning in the presentation. Which where there was a defined line, maybe aside from the, above the garage, where there would be an opportunity to define the accessory to the primary.
I mean, I think all three of these very clearly have a separate entrance.
Yeah. Yeah, I suppose on the right there.
I mean, they, they go to show the sidewalks to the entrance, for that matter. But again, I don't know that that, I mean, you could have a single door with a foyer that went to both units, like any duplex, and you know, does it have a separate entrance? You know, again, how far do we want to take a definition? To, how simple can we keep it for staff?
Right.
Let me phrase it that way.
Commissioner Singh?
Yes, if the homeowner has the ability to rent that unit, you can't rent, you, let's say for to a college student, or to a senior citizen. You can't have that person living in that added unit, and there's no separation from the home. The, the family in the home is living there, and then how, how can you rent? It's just like renting out a room. Where there's all, everybody uses the same entrance. That, that's more like an additional room to the house. To, to be a dwelling unit, you need to have that separation from the home. There can be a common door that you lock it, and the, the tenant cannot open it. But the wall must be there, otherwise you can't rent it to, to somebody. I, I think the right thing to do is to put the wall, and, and there's an en- a separate entrance.
If, if it's, if I may.
Commissioner Benke, yeah.
If, if it's, if it's just the room that's being rented, then it's like the Airbnb model.
That's right, yeah.
Which, that's being addressed in a whole different set of ordinances here, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, see, so I don't think we need to address that here at all. You know, it's, that's something else. Again, I, I, as I, I would say that as an accessory, because it calls it out as an accessory, that it there, it needs to be separation from the primary, principal structure, I guess.
By which, by, by, by which standard, or what, what would be the definition, I mean, other than simply a wall?
Well, well, I mean
Or a separate entry, or a lock and key?
Well, but, I mean, the wall, but the wall could have a door.
That's right.
But, but does, it would, should be up to the individual homeowner whether it's locked or not. I think most would lock, would lock it, but there again, wi- without that wall, it's just a bigger house, in my mind.
Here's my concern, my only concern with that is every house is gonna have its own different characteristics, and if a house is laid out in such a way that a wall isn't attainable, are we discounting that person from achieving an ADU if the layout of that home didn't allow for it, or?
Commissioner?
Commissioner Reddick, yeah.
Can I ask a clarifying question? Okay. So clearly, we're talking about a detached, or an attached version of our conversation. And, and as an example, in the Egan model and the Lakeville model, that's the only, that's the only thing they allow is attached, correct? And our conversation this evening is, is based around, to Chair Workman's comment, let's say that it's essentially started out as a second master suite that is, then adds a small cooking area, okay? If, i- in that case, then the city would require them to meet kind of what we would consider to be our other ADU requirements. Regardless of whether there's a wall separating them or not, correct?
Today.
Today. And I think what the commission's trying to get at, and help me if this is feasible, is that we're asking for, truly for an attached, we're saying that it, that some sort of permanent or lockable separation has to be in place for the ADU requirements to kick in. If a, if a, if a, if an existing home in R1 fits within the boundaries and the setbacks of a 10,000 square foot lot, and there is a section of the home, going back to my example, that was a second master suite, and a family member was gonna move in, and all they simply did was add a small kitchen, so that person could have a place to cook, but it's still integrated into the house. We are asking to not have that fall under the, to take the path of an ADU. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's kind of where I'm going.
Is that, is that feasible, help us with, because in, in, both in Lakeville and Egan, they do require, they don't care about separation, they just see it as an ADU.
So you can have it internally, or attached in Egan, for example, but they do put limitations on size. Who can live there in the main property, and for how, how there's, there's other performance standards that are looked at. So the direction from council to staff was to create something that followed the Egan model, and that's, that's what we did.
Okay. And the, and then the Egan model then does not care about a separation wall?
No, it can be attached, or integral. They do talk about the architectural design in, like appearance and character and materials and things like that. So it doesn't have the appearance of a second, true second unit or duplex.
And once again, this is just based around an attached version, not a detached version?
Right.
Okay.
And they have the ability to rent it out. Because in our, our, what we are creating here, and we give the homeowner the ability to rent it.
Yeah, I don't think you can rent it out in Egan.
Well, I can understand why, why. If you, if there's no separation, then you just become another member of the family. Or, you know, you're living there in, in, in a room, that's, that becomes a room in the house.
Then it's multi-generational housing.
Yes, yes. That's a different category altogether.
And somebody's preference, a homeowner that wanted to rent, somebody maybe doesn't care if there's a shared foyer or a common space, and maybe another homeowner might prefer that. I mean, I would probably leave that up to the homeowner that's opting for this, for this.
Wouldn't, sorry, Chair.
Oh, what?
By the way, I did think of another thing beyond the wall too. If it's a basement, then it's the floor. I mean, there, there's separation in some way. Didn't we just, isn't, isn't the issue of a non-relative covered here as well, though? That you could have up to four non-related people, so if you had a family plus one non-related person, it still is a family because it's less than that limit of four non-related people?
You could.
Okay.
But, there are, when you get into, if you're renting out this unit, there would be rental licensing that would kick in, unless it's a family member, in that case.
That applies whether it's contiguous to the house or separate from the house.
Correct.
And that's already covered in our ordinances.
Yes. If you rent, you're subject to the rental licensing program.
Commissioner Singh?
Yes, uh, Mr. Chair. You see, that's what I'm talking about. Now, the homeowner has the ability to rent, has to have a rental license to rent that unit out to someone.
Yes.
We, we are gonna, what's the difference with, if, if a homeowner, it's a four-bedroom house, not including the ADU, it's a four-bedroom house, and that homeowner wants to rent one of the bedrooms, or it's the basement, and the basement has a, meet the requirements of these four requirements we have there, basic requirements. And it's, it's the ba- it's the basement, that's not an ADU.
The, I think you're
Or, or in our case, then that becomes an ADU because there's no separation.
There's, I think there's a, a distinction to, there is a separate, if you rent to somebody, you're doing that as a business, and that's subject to a rental license. So that's kind of a, it's, it's kind of separate, but I think, you know, just consider that too in, in your discussion, because that makes things even more confusing.
And someone may build it for, let's say, an aging parent, and then something happens, and it's now available, and now they can rent it to a college student, because now they need a, they need a source of income.
And I think the ADU, the reason for supporting that is to allow people to be able to rent part of a structure, or a separate structure to someone, and also gets by that family definition.
Mr. Chair, I, Commissioners, I, I, I support ADU. I'm not against having an ADU. What I'm concerned about is if you're gonna rent that ADU, and you don't have a separation, I, I, I can't see how I would support that. I mean, you, you rent it to somebody, and it's open. I mean, I have a cons- problem with that. I, however, this is not an action item, this is a discussion item, and that's why I'm bringing, um, bringing out my point of view, how I see it.
Commissioners, one of the things that I think of is, like college students, when I was in college, we, there was one person that owned a house, and then several of us rented, and we each had our own room, but we shared the whole house. And there was a separate, you know, rental agreement, so that Burnsville isn't a college town, but, you know, that's kind of one way to maybe help just make a distinction.
And in looking at the licensing definition, property owner that leases a subject property, except for so on and so forth, rented rooms with an owner-occupied dwelling unit up to three non-related individuals are allowed. So what we're specifically talking about is an attached or detached dwelling. And Commissioner Singh, you feel like we should add some type of physical barrier between the primary and the accessory dwelling to further define it as an ADU?
It's an, it's an additional unit. And if there's no separation, then it's not an additional unit. It becomes part of the main building.
I'm gonna use the same language I think that the code has for, for principle and accessory structures. In order for it to be accessory, it's accessory to the principal structure. If there's no separation, it's the principal structure. And it's, it doesn't talk at all about how it's used. I mean, a garage is accessory to the house. It's still a principal structure when it comes to setbacks. This becomes a little different because an accessory dwelling unit, if it's attached to the house, it has to meet principal setbacks.
That's, um, the way it's spelled out.
But if it's detached from the house, it meets accessory setbacks. There's a door between the house and the garage, it's a different use. The accessory dwelling unit, it's still a living space, but it's a different use? Because it's for a, another family. And I think that's the best way to look at it.
Well, and maybe if we could clarify this, in, in the example in that photo, if there was a shared common area without a physical barrier, that homeowner in Burnsville would still be permitted to rent that out despite the ADU, if they so choose?
They could rent out a room.
But not a wing?
They can't create a separate dwelling unit, right now.
Right now.
So if this house was in Burnsville, and someone wanted to rent the front garage, the bedroom that's associated with it, the kitchen that's associated, the bathroom that's associated, they could do that without there being a separation between the two units?
Correct.
Today?
Today.
So what we're saying is, if there's a, a built-on or an accessory building, which currently we're not allowed.
Correct.
So really, these are kind of apples and oranges almost, because what we're seeing in front of us is already permitted. We're talking about an additional structure to the home.
Right. Do, by allowing the internal example, it would pro- provide some parameters for staff, so as explained before, there was some confusion be- between staff, is this allowed, is it not allowed? Are, you know, rental licensing inspectors, they see one thing, and communicating it to us, and Deb and I might have different interpretations of the code, so having it spelled out in code, I think would be helpful for, you know, planners going over.
I think it always has been spelled out in the ordinance, it was interpreted differently than what the ordinance actually said.
Yeah, sure.
Commissioner Benke?
I think, I think if, if there is no separation, it is a hu- a single house. As long as there is separation, then it can be, become an ADU. The only thing I want to go to with that then is that we, I think we have to be very careful that the rules that we're trying to make up for ADUs are appropriate for ADUs, and not for multi-generational housing, because, I mean, people, that, both of these are needed, both of these are needed housing. And what I don't want to get us into a situation, it's just like what Staff was talking about, where we create an ordinance that all of a sudden pushes a particular applicant into a direction that they're not, that they're not after, that limits them, that we weren't intending on.
I concur. I don't, I don't want to create an undue hardship by over-complicating the definition of this.
I, I mean, I do believe we're trying to help here by, by offering the ability for someone to intensify their, their own, their own situation as they need to, and I think that's great personally.
So are we at a consensus or a crossroads on how we want to define this? I mean, we want to add additional wording to that definition, or, or leave it as it stands right now?
I've got some more questions regarding the, the definition.
The floor is yours.
Thank you. Under accessory dwelling unit, it says, added to, created within, or detached from. Created within is what I want to focus on. Cause I did see a note in your background that said that nope, it was actually a definition of the dwelling unit at 1,100 square feet. If we had a home that was 1,100 square feet on the main floor, and somebody wanted to carve an ADU out of that 1,100 square feet, is that, no, is that still a dwelling unit in the city of Burnsville? The, the principal structure?
If it's internal and under the
But separated.
Oh, but separated? I would say, I would interpret that as no, that it's, it becomes a
That's sort of what I was trying, I mean, this I think again is to help Staff, that, and I think you've got it, that if if you're gonna take a, a relatively small rambler, which there are many of them in Burnsville, and you want to carve an ADU out of it, that's not allowed.
But I think that should be spelled out, because that's just my interpretation.
Well, but, and I guess the point, my point is, is that as soon as you remove that square footage by separating the principal structure from the accessory dwelling, that principal structure no longer has 1,100 square feet. So I think we're back to the issue of the separation again. Now, the interesting thing is, is you can do it if it's a basement, because you've got 1,100 square feet on the main floor, and presumably you've got something less than that, but not much, in the basement, so you could do it that way. But I, I do think the separation becomes needed, again, no, I've, I've said it twice, I mean, assess, principal accessory. Principal accessory.
Commissioner Singh?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I, I, I too have a concern about created within. You have a building, a, a home. When we say created within, we can take one of those, probably a master bedroom. It will have sanitation requirement. Shelter, it has heat. And you put in, put a stove in there, then that qualifies according to this as an ADU. An ADU has to have, in my opinion, a separate entrance. And I don't want to repeat again And I don't want to repeat, again, I'm asking that it have to, must have a wall, uh, separate from the main ho- home and, uh.
Well, Commissioner Singh, in that example, we do have a requirement that it shall not be less than three hundred square feet, which.
I was just gonna ask about two.
Should we move on to some of the other questions and then come back to the definition if we need to?
That's a good idea.
Um, so, performance standards, uh, we did write, um, in the draft ordinance, uh, some details about the floor area, um, that it shall be no larger than nine hundred and sixty square feet or thirty-three percent of the, um, primary residence footprint, um, excluding any attached improvements, not constituting a four-season, four-season habitable rooms, whichever is less, and that an accessory dwelling unit, um, shall not be less than three hundred square feet. And then, um, we also talk about building coverage, um, that the ADU, um, cannot exceed twenty percent of the lot or parcel.
Commissioner Benke?
Okay, floor area, so we take the original house and the ADU cannot be more than thirty-three percent of that. And that's what we're trying to say within the parentheses here is we are, we are excluding the improvements from the, from the measurement of the square footage.
Um, so.
Yeah, the, the negatives are piling up here.
So the, not only, the ADU can't be larger than nine hundred and sixty square feet.
Right.
It also cannot exceed thirty-three percent of the primary residence footprint. So if, if you have a large home and thirty-three percent, um, of that is like fifteen hundred square feet, well, it can't be larger than that nine hundred and sixty.
Right. I, I was starting to wonder if the, if the comment in the parentheses is helping the definition.
Excluding any attached improvements, not constituting four-season habitable.
Basically, you can't count the porch or a covered screen porch outside as part of your square footage to, yeah, but, I mean, those, and those don't qualify as square footage under the building department definition of the name, so I'm just wondering if there's a building department, a, a definition that works better here. So you're, so you're working together again.
I can tell you, this is based off of Egan. Um, so if we want to make it our own, um, and tweak it a bit, um, we can certainly do that.
It took me three reads to figure out what it was trying to say.
Yeah, confused.
Um, we do speak to, um, and we could speak to garage space being excluded or just accessory buildings being excluded.
Right. A primary residence, okay, maybe it's the fact that it calls out primary residence footprint. And again, that's the term they used. Maybe this just needs a little wordsmithing to get rid of two negatives. It only includes four-season habitable rooms.
Only includes?
Only includes.
As part of the total footprint?
Instead of excluding that, which is not four-season. You, you only, the residence, the residential footprint or the residence heated footprint or the residence floor area, which it only includes home, home, home improvements that are four-seasonable, four-season habitable rooms, or something like that anyway, just to get rid of the two negatives.
I see what you're saying. So you're saying excluding things that are not four-season, okay.
And I'm just curious, the, the square footage is here, again, just come from Egan or there was some basis in, in testing to determine how much living space you can actually fit in these?
Yep, so, let's see here, let me jump back, I should have had Egan's ordinance side by side.
It's.
That would have been helpful. Let me see.
Regina, were the areas part of the white paper, what other communities had for various sizes and?
Let's see, hang on.
I scanned those, but I did not read them.
I just didn't know.
I was more interested in the actual ordinance.
Okay, so that is based off of Egan's, um, numbers.
Okay. And I, I, I bring, I mean, both of them are, are, are clearly doable. I think the issue is now we've established a three hundred square foot minimum unit and we're gonna be talking about another one tonight that's five hundred and I just wanted to sort of point that out, that if we can get a living space within three hundred square feet, that's, that's, that's doable. I think we, uh, might want to just keep that in mind for future. Next one here, is the twenty percent, uh, coverage, is that, um, the same as what a regular single family has or is that an improvement on, on, or an increase?
So we don't have a percentage requirement in our single family as far as the maximum building coverage for a primary residence, it's simply meet the setback requirements.
So you can build anything you want inside the setback requirements?
For our primary residence, yes.
But now with the ADU.
Except in a shorlent like Deb pointed out.
Yeah, right, yeah. That's always except, but then here, but when you add the ADU, you're limited to twenty percent of the lot or parcel?
Yes, again, um, following Egan's model.
Okay, uh, twenty percent of ten thousand square feet is two thousand square feet. Most houses, my house by itself is two thousand square feet. I could not add an attached ADU with this ordinance written this way. I got about thirteen hundred square feet of house and sixty-six hundred square feet of, of garage in footprint only. That's my coverage.
So with the.
We can keep it, we can.
Right.
You can recommend to take it out completely, um, as long as it follows the primary residence setbacks or principal building setbacks.
I think as long as.
It's up to you what you want to recommend.
As long as your setback requirements are being met, the twenty percent almost seems arbitrary because we're already superseding that with the square footage requirement and setback requirements. Unless I'm not aligned in saying that.
Are, are we, are we having any issues with stormwater that are coming up that we know about that might start requiring us to have coverage maximums?
I think that's the issue and why they wanted to keep it small, um, because anytime, regardless, um, and this isn't even dealing with the lower Minnesota watershed district, which is gonna get a lot more detailed, um, but anytime you have, um, five thousand square feet or more, um, area that is created, um, created pervious, then you get into the stormwater management.
Imper- imperious.
Right, yes, excuse me, thank you, yeah.
I, I know a lot of cities that I work in, um, they have a thirty percent or square footage maximum based on the size of the lot against a standard. For example, using this, like I say, a ten thousand square foot lot, twenty percent, two thousand square feet, my house can't have an addition as an ADU. If there was a, if we find this to be something that would help, maybe there, maybe the, uh, up to a nine hundred and sixty addition is allowed because that's in the previous definition, which goes above and beyond the twenty percent, but it's allowed as a alternate solution. So it's not that every house, you know, if you are already at fifteen and nine, nine, nine sixty brings you up to nineteen, you don't get to go to twenty. I mean, you know, the number. Working in this business, I, I'm, I'm seeing the codes from the other side of what Staff does, but I'm gonna offer as many opinions as I can in terms of making them easy.
So we could modify or can join seven and eight to say that you should, you know, shall not exceed nine hundred and sixty square feet, but unless nine sixty exceeds twenty percent of the lot line?
I, I think C eight needs to be looked at. I think our situation might be different than Egan's in this case and I don't know if that applies here as well as it might to them.
Commissioner Bragick?
Thank you, Chair. Commissioner Benke, why do you think Egan would be different because the number of lots over ten thousand square feet?
Correct. I mean, I would admit, was the ordinance that came from Egan was, did they go down as low as ten thousand square feet with this?
Twelve thousand square feet and sixteen thousand square feet.
Egan has bigger lots.
They do, and larger homes typically, I mean, on average.
Right. I, I do think it's a, it's a size of lot issue. And because of that, that twenty percent might need to be twenty-five or thirty percent in Burnsville to be something useful. Or it's gone and we don't need it.
I tend to agree. I mean, if we're gonna kick out a large portion of that, uh, R, R one map based on that lot size requirement, then I don't see the purpose for it either.
If, if it's a coverage thing, then we need to address it in building coverage and not necessarily here.
Well, and if it's meeting setback requirements and total square footage requirements.
Why do we need C eight if we, if we meet the setbacks?
Right.
And the square footage in C seven?
So are we, should we, we've got three. Commissioner Bragick, are you?
Yeah, so I'd like to clarify some statements. So what, what I think we're trying to say is that we're questioning the twenty percent if, if the, all setbacks are met and it's not larger than nine hundred and sixty square feet and it's not more than thirty-three percent. And I, I agree with Commissioner Benke, we could probably tweak the, the excluding thing, but I, I don't think it's far off. I mean, I, I get, the, the ultimate point is we're not gonna allow them to use covered porches and garages.
Correct. It's gotta be heated, it's gotta be heated living space.
Heated living space, um, is that correct, Staff? Is that how you see that, is that we're, um, gonna, because really, if we're, if we're adhering to the setback requirements, um, really, in the big picture, the house is just bigger whether it was an ADU or not.
Right, yeah, I think we can, we can work with that.
Because I'm not really excited about, just because it's an ADU allows them to make it be thirty-five percent of the lot because it's an ADU, I still want to try to maintain setbacks from a neighbor. And so, um, I guess that just would be a, a tweak if we look at Egan's, you know, if we, because I understand the city council really wanted us to take Egan's model and, and look at it and that may be something that we had to tweak in the city of Burnsville just because of our average size of lot. But I still believe as long as we've got other things in place from a setback requirement, I think we're, I, I would agree.
If, if I may? Did the calculator thing here. My house, approximately thirteen hundred square feet of heated footprint, I can add four hundred and twenty-nine square feet of ADU to meet the thirty-three percent standard, it's under the nine sixty. When I add that back to my coverage, so I'm adding back in the garage space, I'm at about, I'm just under twenty-five hundred square feet, which is, which would be a twenty-five percent coverage with the ADU. I, I think if somebody was to play with a couple of typical lots in Burnsville, you're probably gonna find that there's a number there that is a sweet spot, um, that might allow that to stay without impacting somebody else's application.
So do we want to modify that or strike it or come back and, and revisit that? I mean, I wouldn't expect Staff to go and measure every lot we have in the city of Burnsville to determine that that's ten thousand square feet.
I think a, a sampling of ten could take care of it, Chair.
So our recommendation on eight is to give more or definition to the twenty percent of the lot or parcel, to see if that's not enough or too much.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, couldn't we put in that, couldn't we add that to C seven? If we wordsmith the C eight and then rather than having a C eight, just see if we can include it in C seven? Because we, remember the definition gives us the basic requirements, like the heating, you can't include garage and, or the porch outside because it's not heated.
I think the, this is just my opinion, the reason why they're separated is because in C seven, we're talking about total floor area of the home itself, where in C eight we're talking about the lot size. So there's kind of two separate items that we're considering, correct me if I'm wrong, but.
I would concur with that. The second one is more, is coverage only. And I, I, I do see that as a separate, personally, having, you know, gone through ordinances, I do see that typically, um, as a separate item.
And we can, I, what I can do is, um, as suggested, play with that twenty percent number and see, does that need to be bumped up to twenty-five, thirty, um, based off of sampling of our typical, um, lot sizes and, and home sizes.
And I think, you know, River Hills, Summit Oaks, I mean, there's, there's, there's only a few neighborhoods sized, you know, typically that were done here over the.
And you also have the R one A's.
Yeah, but that's, that's, I think that's a much ease, you're never gonna hit either item with, in the R one A's.
That's why I'm saying we should find, find like a sweet, uh, number that you can, we can use.
I, I, my thinking on it is we, we, we have older, you know, Burnsville Heights, um, River Hills, there, there are areas where we have lot sizes that were done earlier in our development and then we have later, later lots. Later lots tend to be smaller with bigger houses on them and I think that's, that's the couple of tests that I think we need to check and just see what works given the numbers.
Then before we move on, just on seven, we were just saying we need to wordsmith that a little bit to alleviate some confusion on the parentheses, excluding any attached improvements not constituting four-season habitable rooms, correct? Just change that to something like total livable square footage or something and the like? Correct?
I can, I can work on something and then bring that back for your, um, review.
Right.
All right.
Um, so continuing on with performance standards, um, we want, uh, the commission to take a look at design. The two standards specifically that speak to design are C nine, ADU shall be designed and maintained as to be consistent with the architectural design, integrated material, style, appearance and character of the primary residence as a single-family residence. So if you're driving down the street, it doesn't look like a duplex, it looks like it's integrated, um, into, into the home.
Finally, finally we get something that I hope all of us can agree with.
I, I, well, yes, but no. Can you go back to the, the sketches?
And then that last line talking about cannot be higher than the principal home.
Yeah, above the garage is above the rough line of the principal home. So technically that eliminates that as a possibility. And the next one too, would they can't be on the same plane? Can you go back to the, the Lennar picture? Does this qualify as the same facade face with the two doors on the front facade of the house?
I read it as no, but.
Yeah, technically no, um, but.
But my, my point being is the stone wraps around the front of the house. It's something that is less than clear in design, whether the front is from corner to corner or it's just what faces front, which no one can see except on plan. You always see things in perspective like this, so you're always seeing that front facade. I don't think either of those two things should be in here personally.
Which ones are we, you're in eight and?
Eight and sixteen, uh, nine and sixteen. I think that last line about ADU, I think that has to come out.
On which one?
Uh, on nine.
So you're saying that you're okay if it's above the garage?
As long as it's designed and maintained to be consistent with the architectural design of the house. I mean, to me, that should take care of it. If it's well-designed and it extends above the height of the primary residence, who cares? And then if the ADU is an entry, uh, as an exterior entry door, it shall not be located in the same building facade as a front entrance door. I, I do think that the picture of Lennar, the Lennar house, it does subordinate that second door. It appears as to be a service entrance and I think it's, the house still has one front door. I think that's critical for any home, no matter what, anyway.
I had sixteen circled because I wasn't sure about how competent I was with that one as well because it seemed like semantics to me, I mean, if it's designed, um, if it's if it's designed properly, then if it's on the same facade, to me personally, I just didn't, I didn't see an issue with that.
I think in Burnsville, just in general, because of the width of the lots and because of the placement of the home, it may be difficult to even accomplish that on the front facade. In many cases, likely, it's gonna be on a side or on the rear, just again, because of the, in most lots. There's some anomalies out there, but.
Here's the example I think that I'd like people to consider, sorry, excuse me. Somebody who is trying to design one to ADA requirements, you are not gonna be able to roll somebody down a sidewalk and down into the backyard of a walkout lot to go around the back of the house and come in the back door. That situation probably should have a door on the main pathway, on the principal, on the main pathway into the home. So I, I don't think that restricting it to be off the front is a wise choice.
And, I mean, it looks like it's the workman and Benke showed me. If there was a, a, a door that wasn't on the front facade, are we talking to proper walkways to that door? To, I guess, to meet those ADA requirements where we've got a paved or cleared walkway to that entry point?
Do you recall, Deb, if there, if we have anything in our zoning code currently that says you have to have like stairs or a walkway to your primary entry?
I believe so, for, yeah.
Common practice.
There are, there are, you know, depending on what you have, there are standards that go along with it.
Single family is not required to meet ADA requirements. However, there are these elements of the code that talk about a solid surface strut walkway and things like that that have to be provided, yes. It's in the building code, not the, not the zoning code.
Then if we get into rental licensing, then we've got a different situation.
Quick question, Mr. Chair, if I may. Are we, are, do we expect every home in Burnsville to be able to have an ADU? What we're, I, I don't, for example, the, the handicap or the entrance for a disabled person. In my opinion, if that's in the front facade of the house, it takes away from the appearance of the house. People driving down the street can look at what's going on there. I mean, not every home is, can be ready for the, for people with disability. And if we are trying to say we have to put it in the front, again, for, for, what would neighbors say, you know, and I, I, I don't know. I, I mean, I, I agree that if you have a, a ADA person in there, yes, you have to do it. But my question is, does it mean that every home in Burnsville need to be amenable to having?
And there, if I can just add, there's certain exemptions that take place with ADA. So if something had to be done, then the city can make reasonable accommodations for that.
Good.
Commissioner Brage.
Thank you, Chair. It seems to me, the example of a Lennar home for me is, is fine. And the, as Commissioner Benke pointed out, it's a, it's a, it's not the main entry door, it's to the side. And if that's what we're trying to get at with C16, I just think we need to change the wording. Cause I, I agree, it, it, it doesn't look like it's the front, it doesn't look like, I mean, we're, what we're, I think we're asking for is we just don't want a front door and a front door.
Yep.
Correct.
If we, if a front door is here and a front door is here, that's fine. I just think you need to reword it.
I'm, a different example, wider house, front door here, service door here, service door accesses the ADU. They're on the same face. This should be allowed. I, I just don't think we need it. I, I think if, I don't think we need it.
I don't think we should have two front doors side by side.
That's true.
However, we wanna get there. I like the way the Lennar design. Did it, there are many, many homes in the city of Burnsville that have a front door and a service door to the garage.
Correct.
That face the street. And so maybe it's as simple as if it's on the, if it's on the same direction, they have to be X amount of feet apart, or if it's on a different direction, then it's fine, or, or something. But I, I believe whatever, what Eagan and Lakeville have allowed with that design is workable. I just think we, we might need to tweak how they or how they worded it. Maybe we're, maybe we're picking at this. If it's working in Eagan and Lakeville, we're fine. But I, I, I think we just, I think that's the gist of what we're trying to get at. And if you're comfortable with enforcing it with those general thoughts, then that's really up to staff.
Commissioner Brage.
I, I think I'm trying to help staff by nailing it down even tighter. I think the language could be along the lines of an ADU front entry door shall not be confused with the front door of the primary residence. If they're two, if they're two side by sides, it's like a duplex, it's confusing. If it's, it's not bigger, it's, it's always subordinate. It's accessory structure.
I think that's gonna be a little too subjective, but I.
How about the direction to start with? No, I get it.
The separation, maybe, but what is that happy?
I, I think there, again, you're, the size of the house is gonna determine. I mean, that, those are clearly only feet apart. You know?
I don't think we have an answer right now, but I think you get the gist of what we're asking for.
Agreed.
Yeah, more information.
We can put something.
Agreed.
Put something together for you to act.
I think we agree, we like what's in here. And we're questioning that C16 could be, could be tough to enforce and tough to interpret.
Okay.
I think it gives too many people a problem with trying to create an ADU.
Thank you, Chair.
Very healthy, Commissioners.
The next performance section or is setbacks. So in our language, we're talking about that the attached ADU shall meet the principal structure setbacks in the underlying zoning district. We kinda touched on this a little bit earlier. And then if it's detached, that it meet the accessory structure or accessory building setbacks for the underlying zoning district. And they're a little bit different, whether it's R1 or R1A. Like you did, discuss that. Are you okay with it? Do you have any comments? I can always flip back to the previous slides too, to refresh your memory.
Commissioners, any questions or comments on this?
I'm okay with C3 and 4.
Perfect.
Good. I do have one quick question on five, though. Property owner.
Sorry, I thought it was on the next slide.
Oh, is it?
Let me jump to, no, it's not. Okay, go ahead.
Property owner must reside in either the primary residence or the ADU. And this is really a, a small detail, and it's just for more of a clarification piece. But if a homeowner who had an ADU sold it to a, somebody who was planning on renting the home at large as a rental property, does that create a problem? If it's going from a homesteaded property with an ADU to now a, a rental property with an ADU attached to it, it would be kind of a perfect storm. I guess because the, the, the original owner would have that intention, maybe the next owner, do you understand what I'm saying?
So whoever that next property owner is, if they wanted to maintain it as an accessory dwelling unit, they would have to live there according to how this is spelled out. So if they wanted to rent out the entire house, then as this is spelled out, they would have to maybe demo the attached accessory dwelling unit. They would have to redesign it so that it's part of the primary residence.
Could they have four people live there and one of them live in the ADU and they're still underneath the rental maximum for a family?
The catch here is that the property owner needs to live here.
Okay.
So if somebody's gonna buy a house purely for rental saw this, it would, they would hopefully be wise enough to know that that's probably something that they're gonna face.
Correct.
Through their process. Okay, that's my only question on that one.
Um, I think we skipped over parking. Another performance standard that I wanted to have you discuss. So we're saying that the accessory dwelling unit, that you can't convert your existing garage into an ADU unless you build a brand new two-car garage for, for the primary residence. And that, that can't trigger a need for a variance by doing that. And then C14 speaks to the need to have parking for the ADU. So what does the commission think about that?
Commissioners.
I guess my, my main question there would be if, I don't know how many of these we have in Burnsville, but if you've got a home with an attached two-stall garage and a detached one-stall garage, and that one-stall garage is converted, you know, it's met the square footage, would then they have to build another garage if they're converting an existing detached garage?
If, so, they'd have to, they could convert a once, the one-car garage into living space as long as they meet all building codes. But they'd have to keep a garage fitting two cars on the site. It could be detached, it could be attached to the home. But yeah, you could, let's say you had a three, three-car garage, you can convert part of that into living space, again, meeting all building and fire codes and all of our other performance standards, so.
Really, what we're paying attention to is that we have to maintain at least one 440 square foot two-car garage.
For the lot.
Yes, okay. Thank you. Commissioner Singh?
An additional garage may be constructed, provided it complies with all state and city regulations. That's, that this additional garage is in lieu of the two of street parking?
So.
Because if you, if you build another garage on the property with meet all the requirements, then you still count two spaces in the street?
So you could have your primary residence.
Yeah.
And then that primary residence required to have a two-car garage.
Yep.
That's just today's code.
That's right.
And then you create this ADU. For that ADU, you could build a two-car garage as long as you meet all of our other requirements, maximum accessory building percentages and, and all of that. Or there could just be two spaces for that accessory dwelling unit on the property on a hard surface.
Yeah, what we, what we say, we, we're saying here, an additional garage may be constructed, provided it meets all state and city regulations. This is in lieu of the, because we did specify, we need two spaces in the street. But now we also said we can build a garage, and we did not qualify. If you build a garage, then you don't need two streets, on the street.
To clarify, two spaces, the off-street pertains to not on the street, so they have to be on your private driveway. But you, you could have, in this instance, a garage instead of those two open spaces.
That's what I'm saying. And we, we should specify that. If you, if you build a garage for the ADU, then it's in lieu of the two spaces in the street for the, for the ADU. All you need.
I think what this is specifically pointing to is if you're gonna convert your garage into an ADU, then you need to replace that garage with a two-car, with a 440 square foot garage. So you can't have a, a home without a garage.
But he doesn't say anything about using your garage for the ADU. He doesn't say anything about that in C14.
Oh, 14. Well, cause I think it's, it's referenced in 12. Right?
Right.
Commissioner Brage.
Yeah, I, one thought here. By definition, Commissioner Singh, an off-street parking space would be a garage. If it's in the garage or if it's in front of the garage, it doesn't matter. Example I'm thinking of here is you have a three-car garage.
Yeah.
You have a three-car garage, two, two stalls are for the homeowner, they're required. There's two, there's two parking spots in front of it. You have the third stall, I'm, I'm not converting the garage.
Yes.
You have a third stall that you can give to the person with the ADU, and then there's still a parking spot for that. My thing is I think that the two off-street parking spaces may be a little excessive for a one-bedroom ADU, but that's just a personal opinion on my part. For discussion.
If you put it one off-street parking, and you drive it.
Commissioner Brage.
Thank you, Chair. I, I don't mean to like necessarily scare people, but I agree with Commissioner Benke on that. I do, um, I do think that, um, sorry. We, uh, we're asking for A S. Chair Workman said, we're, somehow we have to end up with a two-car garage. So if you take the garage, you have to be able to build one. I do think it's a bit excessive to require two off-street parking for the ADU. Given the percentages of the house, I think the math would work that the AD, that one off-street parking space is required for the ADU. But I, I, I guess I would just like to have staff go back and do the math on that from a standpoint that it's pretty simple. We're not allowing somebody to completely eliminate a garage. However they get there, we don't care. And number two, the ADU does require that there's gonna be one parking space off-street, whether it's in another garage or whether it's off the street. But currently, we have a regulation that says you can't park in the street at night. So they need to keep those, those cars off the, off the street.
I would concur. Two does seem a bit onerous. Commissioner Singh, any questions?
No.
I just have a quick follow-up question and one that's not listed again. Where is it? Where is it? Oh, number 13. The total number of residents in the ADU shall not exceed two occupants. The ADU shall contain no more than two bedrooms. Is occupants an adult? Or if a family of mom and dad had a child or children, are we kicking them out of the ability to rent in this situation?
So it would just be two. It doesn't matter if they're one or 100. It's two occupants.
I'm not personally crazy about that, just because I think if what we're.
And I think it, um, it's, I mean, it's not listed in the zoning code, but it's reflective of, I believe, the property maintenance code. And those standards about, I think it's the property maintenance. What, what, how much space a person, you know, could occupy and still be comfortable and not feel like they're too enclosed and have access to air, light, water.
I guess it's just the scenario I see in my head is if, if a young family did occupy an ADU and they had a small child. Maybe this is a scenario that they could benefit from living in an ADU, and then it kind of negates that, maybe what the intention of this is to a certain degree. I, I'm not gonna fight on it too hard, but it's just something I wanted to bring up. Cause if it is to encourage alternate housing types based on housing trends, this might be something that they, that part of the world could benefit from. But that's just more of a clarification piece, so.
Next, micro-apartments. So again, as part of the governance process that we went through with council, this came up towards the end of that process. And one of our council members wanted us to take a look at our standards that we have in our city code, specifically for multifamily dwellings. And we do have currently maximum, I'm sorry, minimum square footages for our senior housing. And then some als, some minimums also for one bedrooms, for example, two bedrooms. So micro-apartments, you could apply through a planned unit development and ask for a smaller bedroom square footage. Or to be more friendly to our development community, we can lower that threshold. So we looked at just some examples. Minneapolis and, and St. Paul have smaller square footage sizes shown here. um, square footage sizes, um, shown here, um, in Minneapolis, and here in St. Paul, uh, you're looking at four hundred square feet, give or take. Um, and so council really liked the idea of, of eliminating some barriers. Um, and the direction to staff was to eliminate the senior, um, housing square footage requirement altogether, that that could, um, that, as long as you're meeting all of our building codes, um, that they wanted that to be eliminated. And then as far as for, um, our, let's see here, as far as for just general multifamily, um, currently we have a threshold of five hundred square feet for floor area for apartments, they wanted that lowered to four hundred square feet. And then for one-bedrooms, from eight hundred square feet minimum to five hundred square feet minimum. Um, so, the proposed draft language, um, is reflective in this um, proposed ordinance change. Again, eliminating that requirement for, um, our senior housing, or it's identified as retirement housing. So, um, there you see the draft language reflective of council's comments. Um, we do however, uh, want Planning Commission to discuss. Um, a couple of things that we want the Planning Commission to think about, um, number one, by reducing the square footage, um, of these apartments, um, do we want to add a performance standard that if they're reduced to this amount, that you're required to provide additional green space or open space for the enjoyment of these residents? Because you're taking away that kind of family room, living room area that a traditional apartment might have. So maybe you have to put that into additional exercise space, or swimming pool outdoor area, or barbecue area, um, as the, the developer, um, is developing their plans, that's something that they would incorporate. Um, or, the other thing, um, we wanted, um, Planning Commission discussion on is to, and this would happen at a future meeting, but to potentially change our density requirements within our city code and comp plan. So, technically, a developer could build in the same footprint, um, but within that same footprint of the building, they could have more units within that, that building. So it might look the same, but they could double the size, or double the amount of units within a building. So do we want our comp plan and our code to be reflective of that potential? So, for example, our code might say that you, your an apartment unit has to have a, a thousand square feet. But you could have three micro-apartments fit into that same one thousand square feet. Um, so that's gonna up your density, same footprint. So, something to think about, um, for the future. Again, do we wanna be a little more flexible in that, that density?
Commissioners, we'll just start with number one, is there any questions or discussion on, um, considering indoor or outdoor amenities?
Chair?
Commissioner Benkey?
No, no questions, I think yes, it's, it needs to be considered as part of the approval personally.
Anybody else? Commissioner Bradrick?
Thank you, Chair. Um, I would be clear at the other end of the continuum. I, I, um, I don't, I don't see that as a, as a requirement, I see, um, um, hundreds of apartments being built in Minneapolis right now, that, that is the goal. Smaller apartment, more, uh, public areas inside the building, that's, that's the trend. And the, the unit itself is smaller, and the space inside the building, there's more community space inside, but I'm not looking to regulate that as a city. Um, if they build something that's not rentable, or people don't like it, it's, it's not our problem. So, I would be kind of at the other, other, other end of the continuum than Commissioner Benkey there. And I would have a bunch of questions about the whole, 'cause it, we're not changing the number of parking stalls required, we're not changing
I haven't even gone there yet.
setback yet, we're not, we're not really changing any of that. And, Chair, I do have one more question. From a math standpoint, they really can't double the number of units if we're going from five hundred to four hundred, if we're in the same space.
Um, I mean, that was maybe an exaggeration.
Okay, I, I just wanna make, I mean, it's really, we're only asking to take the unit from five, the minimums from five hundred to four hundred.
But removing a cap totally for senior housing.
For senior housing, okay. But, um, from a standpoint of, um, we're, really, we're not, we're not touching anything else, we're still gonna require, uh, um, uh, as an example, the, the building that's in litigation, that in the heart of the city right now, there's still a requirement for a certain amount of parking. All of that is, we're just simply giving the, the builder the flexibility to do what they need to in their allowed square footage that we give them on the lot, to do whatever they want, and if they decide to take that X amount, a thousand square feet per floor, and have so many units that are four hundred instead of five hundred, and they want the remaining square footage to be a public space or a community gathering room, I, I don't, I don't care. So, um, I'm not looking to, to further require that of the builder.
Thank you, Commissioner Bradrick. Commissioner Singh?
Yeah, um, no surprise, I, I agree with what Commissioner Br- Br- Bradrick is saying, um, you can't want to reduce it, uh, the size of the, the units, and then if we're gonna go outside and look for barbecue area and swimming pool, and we are going to a different territory. I agree that, uh, there must be space in, in, within the building, common space that people can use. You know, gather and have coffee or something like that, uh, I'm, I'm okay with that.
And then I'll just wrap up number one, and then I'll give it over to Commissioner, uh, Benkey. I'm, I would agree with, uh, Commissioner Bradrick, if a developer's gonna do modified-sized apartments, that's their call on how they're gonna do the remaining, uh, indoor/outdoor amenities, I don't wanna step on toes there. And it sounds like, what Commissioner Bradrick said, the trend is, is to go smaller rooms but bigger community spaces, as I'm reading in different publications. Commissioner, uh, Benkey?
Yeah, I don't disagree with that, I think my point would be that uh, if you do take your five hundred square foot efficiency down to a four hundred, and your eight hundred square foot one-bedroom, you could replace X number of one-bedroom units with twice that number of efficiency units. And I think that for a developer to do that, he does have a, a financial responsibility of his own, a fiduciary responsibility. Um, I think that us encouraging them to have common spaces as a performance standard for the increased density is not totally out of line. It doesn't have to be too onerous, I just think it, it could be there. If they're getting twice as many units, and I do think that there is a way to do that within the math, that should probably have some help from us to direct them to do something good for their, for their, uh, their tenants. Um, by the way, the last sentence of that, "Garages, breezeways, and porch floor spacers shall not be credited in determining the required floor area of the houses."
That's good language, huh?
It doesn't get much simpler than that.
Copy and paste.
Thank you.
Commissioners, um, if I could, one thing I was thinking of as we came across this, I know that oh, there's a number of years ago, we did a PUD review, I believe, for Chauvin, um, Chauvin, no, not Chauvin, um, Chancellor Manor. Um, and we've had some cases with the, some of the apartment complexes that have had the, um, the garages that have been, you know, kind of problematic, and they've taken them down over the years or whatever, because they were just like one big open area, and it just didn't work well. Um, some of the things I think that we need to consider, um, is that we are different from Minneapolis and St. Paul. They have a lot more access to transit, and they've got a lot more things like going to restaurants and other types of things within close proximity, where we do have some of that, but it's not to the same extent. So I'm thinking, um, I just know, one of the things we did with Chancellor Manor is we did want to see them uh, provide like bike lockers, you know, a place so that, because if you don't have the space within your unit, you know, some of those types of things, so, um, I don't know if, if there's any of those, those out there, but just consider that we're not Minneapolis and St. Paul, so the access is not the same, and you can have a smaller unit downtown where you can get to everything very easily, or a quick Uber or taxi, you know, i- if you can't walk, as opposed to, we are still out in the suburbs, so.
That is a good point.
If I may?
Commissioner Benkey?
You know, I, I, I don't think it has to be, hey, you have to provide a party room, have to, I think, I think that it would be, it could simply be, uh, as simple as each unit at each size should have X number of square feet of, um, common space associated with it. And it, it could be simple math that way, and the way they choose to provide it is up to them.
Do we have any thing like that now for higher, medium-density residential?
Um, I almost think we do in Heart of the City, a certain percentage of open space or green space that's required based off of the number of units. I could take a look at that and provide some suggestions.
And then we have the play areas.
Yep.
In, you know, for some of the multifamily districts, where they have to provide so much, you know, um, play space.
We do, and the mixed use.
I think you kinda know where we're sitting on that at the moment.
I can provide some language and, and you guys, um, in the future can take a look and see if that's the direction you wanna go.
Okay. And then did we land, or should we go down and do number two quick, consider changing density requirements within city code and conference plan? Commissioner Bradrick kinda gave us his two cents on that. Commissioner Benkey?
Yes.
Yes?
Yeah, we should look. If, if we're gonna allow for more density, uh, the, the, you know, they should be able to make use of it.
Commissioner Singh?
No, I, I think we, we addressed that when, uh, Commissioner Benkey talked about the indoor space, uh, common space, where people can, you know, gather have coffee and that kind of thing. With each, I would like to see language that, with each unit, uh, that, uh, that spaces, common spaces prov- is provided. And, uh, doesn't have to be in the unit, if it's in the unit, then it's not common space. Just leave it at that.
So, I, I guess I'm confused from the standpoint of what we were, 'cause changing the comp plan is not exactly an easy process. And what, what are we, 'cause, what are we concerned about, or what's the goal from the standpoint of, um, 'cause, you know, I, I guess I initially took this as developer A wants to build a new building, and we've given them their setback requirements and some of their, their density requirements. And are we looking to change that dense, 'cause we have a different density requirement in certain parts of the city? So, what hardship are we putting a develop, I guess I'd wanna know what hardship we're putting a developer up against if we don't increase the density, or if we mess with the comp plan, is all I'm looking for.
So, and that's something that we can come back to with the information on, we weren't prepared, um, at this point in the discussion, um, and just wanted a reaction from Planning Commission to see if you wanted us to explore this further, and this might be a twenty nineteen work plan item. Um, but it, it is, there is the potential for, i- if a developer were to come in with one footprint today, um, and meet all of our code requirements, it might, the code might say that you could have two hundred um, units within that building. But if we allow micro-apartments and change our density within that same footprint, the developer might be able to add an additional forty units. And then they're over our threshold in our comp plan, and over our threshold spelled out in our zoning code. Um, and then that, that's a problem, they have to ask for a PUD, um, amendment, they have to potentially amend our comp plan, get, you know, permission from our, from the Metropolitan Council to do that. Um, so, and that takes time. And so, do we cha- make the change now to make it easier for that developer to come in and, um, and not have to be burdened by that?
So, from a technical standpoint, would that mean that we would change, we would make a change to the twenty forty comp plan that we're in the process of doing right now?
Um, potentially. It's draft right now. Um, I mean, it hasn't fully been vetted, um, hasn't been vetted in front of the, the the council, in front of you.
It'll be in front of the school board on Thursday.
But the public hearing hasn't, hasn't been held.
Right.
I think part of this too is, as an implementation, we will be looking at, uh, transit-oriented design. Uh, and in those things, most likely in those areas, you'll see this, I think what, um, Miss Dean is getting at is if you had someone come in and purchase an existing apartment complex, which is happening very frequently, um, and they want to take that three hundred units and then add a bunch of micro-units, further divide it, then all of a sudden, you could be getting way above that standard, like R three C multifamily density because of that. So I think that's kind of the, the question, is that something that is, you know, do you think that would be acceptable? Um, I think in regard to micro-units and modifying the sizes of the units, if that increases the density um, through a remodel or something of that sort, uh, do, does the Planning Commission see that as being an issue, particularly?
And it's not a question you have to answer today, um, something to think about. Um, and we can, we can continue the conversation at a future meeting, we can continue this as part of a, a twenty nineteen Planning Commission work plan item as well, like Deb said, as part of our comp plan implementation.
I guess I'd just be interested to see what are the negative implications of a higher-density, um, micro-unit apartment, um, with regards to our existing code, you know, in our situation. 'Cause like you said, Minneapolis is much different than Burnsville, and at Lakethole, and so on, so what, what could be negatively impact? Commissioner Benkey?
Yeah, uh, this what popped into my head immediately was, if the unit size shrinks, the volume of the building in three dimensions for that same number of units is smaller. And the bill, you know, you could actually build to a certain number of stories, you could build to a certain footprint on the ground, there's a three-dimensional volume there. And by shrinking the units by twenty-five percent, I think that's what they are, um, typically, um, you're, you would actually create a building with the same number of units that's limited by zoning, that would be twenty percent, you know, some percentage smaller. So there's, i- if you don't address the density, or we don't, you know, and we don't have to, but if you don't address the density when you address the size of the units, that volume then is smaller.
Of the, of the building as a whole?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, 'cause the, the building is a composition of all the apartments, well, if the apartments are all smaller, the building's smaller, but they're allowed to build a certain volume of building by the setbacks. I mean, there's a lot of other stuff to factor into, two parking and all that kinda stuff. But I'm just saying that by shrinking the units, you have allowed the building to become more dense, and if we don't address it, the density as part of this somehow, we'll be seeing planned unit development.
Right.
Conditional use permits, comp plan changes. And we might have to, to start with, we might have to do that, and then just do it in the next cycle, but it does, it will happen.
So we'll continue that conversation?
Okay.
Is everybody comfortable with that?
Yep.
Okay.
Um, so that's all the information I have for tonight, uh, this is discussion. Um, next steps would be either to publish, um, for the April thirtieth Planning Commission meeting, or I can come back and we can have another discussion once, um, those changes are, are made to the draft ordinance.
I would say we probably more discussion.
Okay.
Yes, everybody?
Okay.
All right, our next item is a public hearing for City of Burnsville to consider amendments to city code Title X zoning to incorporate changes from the economic competitiveness study, and Ms. Garros is presenting, and thank you, Miss Dean, for that presentation, that was very thorough and very good.
Thank you, um, Commissioners, uh, we have, uh, this is actually a public hearing. The ordinance provisions that you'll be looking at, um, Planning Commission has, uh, viewed at least twice before um, what this is. Uh, at our last meeting, we had a discussion, uh, about the economic competitiveness ordinance changes, and for the most part, uh, the Planning Commission was okay with the changes, with the exception of the administrative review. of the administrative review related to conditional use permits and plan unit developments, those changes. We do have a couple of applications that we know will be coming in shortly. So we thought as long as the Planning Commission seemed okay with those other changes, that we would put together the draft ordinance for those. Most related to the liquor store, making that permitted as opposed to conditional will be helpful, we know, for at least one application and maybe others. So as far as the background and history, I do have the entire ordinance, which we can go through step by step, but I thought I would summarize and then leave it to Planning Commission as to your purview. But this is the actual public hearing that will be held tonight. So as far as the economic competitiveness changes, there was a study that was done by WSB. This was brought about because of council, their all-day work session back in 2017. They wanted to take a look at this. How does Burnsville compare to other, our other adjacent cities? And are there things that we can do to be more user-friendly and competitive? Are there things that because of the way we regulate that are causing folks to decide to locate in a different community as opposed to Burnsville? So they did the study, and the Planning Commission had a report from WSB back in December of 2017. And that study was also presented with our Chair, Commissioner Workman, to a city council work session. And they gave direction to come back, you know, to develop an ordinance. We did that at a, you know, really draft level at your last meeting. And this tonight, then, would be the recommendations for, or an ordinance to make the changes, except for those items related to the administrative review, the CUP changes and PUD changes, that we will bring back to Planning Commission for a future work session or discussion item. So that is not part of the ordinance that's being presented to you this evening. So that, we talked about basically the major things. In terms of summary, is that we defined, made definitions for call centers and data centers. The ordinance basically for restaurants makes them a permitted use as opposed to a conditional use or requiring a PUD in our B3, our general business, in our mixed zones. We also removed the lot size standard because we've had a number of applications that have come in over the past few years that needed CUP or variance because it didn't meet the lot size. That one and a half acre lot size is just something, I don't know exactly where that came from, but it isn't related to like our standard business zoning district lot sizes. So we're suggesting taking that out. Also, taking out the 30% green space standard. And then what would apply is whatever the green space requirement is for the underlying zoning district that it's in. So it can be a lesser standard in the B3 district, for example. And we did add, because we have had this on a number of applications, that if you have like a restaurant that is using grills, you know, something of that sort where you have food odors admitted, we have applied in conditional use permits that we've done in the past that they're, that they allow for or include odor-reducing equipment. So we added that as just a performance standard for restaurants as opposed to coming in for a conditional use permit type of thing. Another thing that we did, health clubs, we made them a conditional use permit in the B1 zoning district because the Planning Commission felt that that being a neighborhood zone, they should probably take a look at that. But then we allowed them to be permitted as opposed to conditional uses in B2. Liquor stores in several districts, we changed from conditional use permit requirement to a permitted use. In the B3 zone, which is our general commercial zone, our largest zone, basically the following uses were changed from CUPs to permitted. Restaurants, stoner monument sales within a building, vet clinics and hospitals that don't have outdoor animal runs, warehouses and wholesale showrooms. In the I1, our industrial park zoning district, and this is mainly north of Highway 13 in the Lark industrial area, basically we made sports performance and the vet clinics without outdoor animal runs permitted uses as opposed to requiring conditional use. Also in that zone, we did put the call center in as a conditional use permit because there tends to be more people associated with that, more potential impacts, higher parking, that type of thing. And we also added outdoor animal runs as a use. It was referenced as outdoor runs in there before, but we just clarified the language and made it consistent throughout. Also in, for all industrial zones, we modified the standards for the amount of accessory retail you could have and removed that 1,000-square-foot limitation and just went to 20% of the floor area occupied by the particular business. In addition to that, if you have a multi-tenant building that has five or more units, there was a provision, also a limitation for that. So that we also just changed and removed that 1,000-square-foot limitation, and now it's just the 10% devoted to accessory retail. So it's much more friendly, easier for folks to deal with. There are a couple of minor changes to the PUD standards where we clarified in that public hearing process that it is the Planning Commission that holds the public hearing for those. So that's just something, you know, bringing that to basically current statutory requirements. And then there's another minor change related to type of documents that get recorded with Dakota County. The current ordinance says zoning ordinances need to be documented, and really what that should have been, and what we're proposing is to clarify that to be the PUD agreements need to be filed. Because for zoning changes, they just need to be published. So with that, we prepared the draft that was sent out to Planning Commission in your packet, and staff is recommending that, Planning Commission should recommend council approval of the ordinance as presented, or if Planning Commission would like to see changes, we can make modifications. And with that, I can stand for questions.
Thank you, Deb. Any questions for Ms. Gerro on this?
There's two.
Commissioner Benke?
Do we know, have we learned what the impact of requiring the odor-reducing equipment does for a restaurant? I mean, is it not, I mean, we've done it as a CUP. It's not onerous? It's not something that requires a lot of?
When they're, yeah, when they're building, building new, it's not an issue.
Very good.
If you're remodeling, yeah, that there can be a cost to that.
Right. Then the only other thing was that last item about the recording. I know this is just an overview, but it's, the PUD agreements not are to be filed, but they're required to be filed.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
The changes, the ordinance said, I think, zoning, it didn't talk about PUDs. And so we wanted to include that. Let's see, it's item B at the top right. Oh, no, that's the public hearing process, under 31. Basically, it said, oop, I'm on the wrong one here. Where is that? Sorry.
Yep. I didn't see it either. Oh, it's in B at the end.
Oh, thank you. Yep, thank you. There we go. Yep.
All changes shall be. It's, oh, okay. Shall be. Okay.
Any other questions for Ms. Gerro? Seeing none, I will open the public hearing, and if anybody would like to speak to this item, you can come to the podium and give us your name and address for the record. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing, and I will turn it back over to the Commission for any more questions or a motion. Or a motion. Commissioners.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Singh.
I would like to move that the Planning Commission recommend the city council the approval of the amendments to city code Title 10 zoning to incorporate changes from the economic competitiveness study.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All of those in favor?
I just have one thing that we are eliminating 10-5-5 conditional uses currently.
Say that again.
We're not addressing the 10-5-5 conditional uses, correct?
We're not addressing the administrative review.
Just clarifying.
Yep. We have a motion, a second on the floor. All, any other questions? Questions? All of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and the motion carries. And that, Deb, correct me if I'm wrong, goes to the city council. Well, no.
No, that will go after, I think, a seven.
April 17th, city council will take action on that item. Our fifth item on this evening's agenda is a public hearing for the City of Burnsville to amend city code Title 10, Chapter 30, signs to amend language related to governmental signs and banner signs on school buildings and Title 10, 12B Park District to amend language related to signs located at ball fields. And Ms. Dean is back again.
Great. Thank you, Chair members of the Commission. First off, I'll start with the school-related banners. So this was at the direction of city council at their January all-day work session. There's concern that was brought up about our schools not being able to display their, any awards that they receive or recognizing that they're a top school in the area. So as a reaction to that, we took a closer look at our city code. And with working with our city attorney and taking a look at our ordinance, seeing where something like this might fit, we came to the conclusion that we could consider public schools to be a governmental unit. So we're proposing that that's defined within our city code and that we allow provisions for, essentially for schools to have a banner available on their building. So the language is reflective of that. I can certainly answer any questions specific to that before I jump to the park section of the code.
Any questions on this? No questions?
Okay, I'm going to jump to the park section. So as our parks department began working with their various vendors and people that rent out their fields, it was noticed that we speak a lot to ball fields, but we don't speak to other types of athletic fields or facilities. And so they wanted an opportunity to broaden that language to allow advertising or signs on any type of athletic field. Doing that, there's also, when reviewing the code, it was noticed that within our park section, there's a lot of language that speaks to the application process and specific contract requirements for someone to do advertising. And city staff thought, this is probably more appropriate for a policy and for an actual application contract with our, through our parks rental. And so the amended language basically takes out all of that information about the contract type stuff and the licensing requirements and puts that into policy. And you have a draft within your packet as well as, basically takes that out of our zoning chapter. We do amend language that speaks to, again, ball fields and making it more general to athletic fields. So really, we wanted to simplify the zoning language. It's all located here, mostly, again, crossed out in red, signifying that we're taking that out, proposing to take that out of our zoning code. You're in charge of reviewing our Title 10 zoning. However, because this is something that our parks commission should also take a look at, it will also be before them on April 23rd. If you happen to, if you end up taking action tonight, recommending approval, it will not go to the next city council meeting. It will not go to a city council meeting until after the Parks Natural Resources Commission has that opportunity to review that. So just a note on that. With that, staff does recommend approval of the changes that are presented within the ordinance. Certainly, if you have any questions about either, I'm more than happy to stand for those.
Commissioners, any questions on the parks piece of this? No questions? I just have one quick clarification. When we're speaking about advertising, we talking about during certain tournaments, playoff games, sanctioned events, or year-round, all winter on the ice rink, a banner could hang with Ram's Tea Shop on it?
Whatever spelled out in the policy now.
Okay.
Subject to our Parks Department approval.
Okay. If there's no other questions on that piece, this is a public hearing, so I will open the public hearing. And again, if anybody would like to speak to this, they could come up, give us your name and address for the record. And since there is nobody, I will close the public hearing. And if there's no other questions or discussion on this item, I would stand for a motion.
Sure.
Commissioner Benke? Mr. Brad?
He was handed first.
Sorry.
Chair, I would make a motion that the Planning Commission recommend the city council the approval of the ordinance as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? And the motion carries. And that will go to the PNRC on April 23rd for additional discussion and review.
Correct.
All right. Our last item on this evening's agenda is updates, and the only update I have is that our next Planning Commission meeting is on April 30th rather than the 23rd because the PNRC will be meeting that day. So if there's any other updates from the Commissioner's staff?
Mr. Chair, this one.
Commissioner Benke?
From our last meeting where we talked about solar energy, I did go online and look at the Woodbury Solar Energy Ordinance because it was referred to at the meeting. I found it interesting that it's two pages. It, however, does include some things that I think we would want to look at, and I would encourage us to do so when it comes back to us. It's really minor stuff, but it's really interesting how they approached it. It also, I'm also a little not sure where the information was coming, the information coming at us, that theirs was a very restrictive ordinance, unless they've changed it recently. And I couldn't find a date of, actually, this has been since 2012. So it's fairly current. I mean, they're using it now, but it's, there's some good stuff in here, too.
And what, do we have a ton of data on that that's coming back around?
We're doing the research now. I have contacted Brian Ross because he thought that he knew of some other ordinances that we may have, too. So I'm pulling together definitely the Woodbury ordinance and then whatever we get from Brian, and also taking a look at those updated model ordinances that he referred to.
Sure.
For other changes. And then we're looking at trying to bring it back to you in May. I'm thinking probably the second meeting at this point, but while it's still fresh on everyone's mind, and then also for the folks that were here that presented and had inquiries related to that.
Sure. Okay. Very good.
Any other updates?
The only other thing we have is just the, your next agenda.
All right. There's no other updates? I would stand for a motion for adjournment.
So?
Motion and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? And the motion carries. And thanks for hanging out with us tonight.